Respectful flag and then the answer to Supervisor Dunn will make a motion to appoint a chairperson.
Okay.
I'd like to call for meeting orders, 7:00 to 2:00 P.M., please. May I respect the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and free to all.
Recording, Secretary McCullough, can you please note the roll?
Noted.
Board members, in the absence of Supervisor Dunn, we'll need to appoint a chairperson for this evening's meeting.
I move to appoint Joe Ferrari as this evening's chairperson.
Motion by trustee Payne, supported by trustee Nichols, to appoint Treasurer Ferrari as chairperson for this evening's meeting in the absence of Supervisor Dunn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Board members, next for your consideration is the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Wednesday, May 9, 2018.
Second.
Motion by trustee Curtis, supported by trustee Payne, to approve the agenda of tonight's meeting as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Board members, next for your consideration is the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by trustee Curtis, supported by trustee Payne, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Clerk Wright, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Dar?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And trustee Curtis?
Yes.
That motion carries. A public comment on items not on the agenda? Sign a public comment. Board members, next we have a public hearing request. Is there a motion, please?
I move to open the public hearing for the request from Birdie's Liquor, or Birdie's Indoor Golf and Bar LLC doing business as Birdie's Indoor Golf and Bar for a new Class C liquor license for 960 through 980 North Lapeer Road at 7:04 P.M.
Second. Motion by trustee Payne, supported by trustee Curtis, to open the public hearing at 7:04 P.M. Roll call, please.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Dar?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Okay, we're now in a public hearing. We have representatives from Birdie's here, I'd like to have them come up and make a presentation for us. Please come up and introduce yourselves. Yeah, right to the podium.
First of all, we'd like to thank everybody for having us. Thank you very much. I'm not sure where you'd like us to start off, but we've come up with kind of what you're looking for and what your request is about. Okay, the request is for the Class C liquor license to open up an indoor golf simulator business with a full bar and dining options.
And that location's at 980?
The location is actually not from 960 to 980.
It's 970.
Yeah, 974 to 980.
All right. That was a little typo that I noticed from the attorney, my apologies. The actual address that we will be using will be the 980, that'll be the main entrance, it'll also be the mailing address.
Any public comment? There'll be a motion to close the public hearing, please.
I move to close the public hearing for the request from Birdie's Indoor Golf and Bar LLC doing business as Birdie's Indoor Golf and Bar for a new Class C liquor license for 974 to 980 North Lapeer Road at 7:06 P.M.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by trustee Curtis, supported by clerk Wright, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We'll be coming onto the agenda item for yours in a short minute. Okay. Pete, any update from the Fire Department?
Evening, Board, a couple different things. First off, Lieutenant Brad Horton has turned in his resignation for retirement. It's effective as of the last day would be the 18th, but his actual workday will be this variety of the 11th. After 33 years, he's finally calling it enough to move on to some other endeavor in his life in the future, so I'd like the Board to wish him well, and I will be coming to you next month for a board resolution of some sort to recognize him next month. Also, we just had ISO came in, did their review Tuesday. Normally, it used to be 10 years that they would do it. We were at roughly right around nine years when they came in and did it. They expect, they're changing it, the entire platform has been changed. Before, we had three different ratings because the village was on its own, the township under the water area was one, and then the area that was outside of the area was a different, you know, that didn't have water, was a different area because that was tankered water or pumped water. They are now combining them all into one, which technically we are just the one fire department handling all three of them anyhow, so they will be reviewing it as that way. Last year, it was probably about a three-week process of everything that they reviewed. This year, it was like two hours. They expect to have our results back probably within 90 to 120 days, so we'll be looking forward to seeing what our results become back on that. So, it'll look pretty good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Pete. Board members, on item 9A, document inclusion minutes report, clerk Wright, please.
Board members, this document was presented to the Township Board on our special meeting on the 22nd of March, and the person who submitted it, Mr. Larry Rosner, was requesting to be put in the minutes. I indicated to him that I don't have the authority to do so, so I'm bringing it to the Board for your consideration, whether or not you want this in the minutes. If you do want it in the minutes, there's a motion presented to you. If you do not want it in the minutes, there's no action required.
Trustee Curtis? You know, that evening, we had this joint meeting. That paper was left on the counter with no ownership taken of the paper itself. And then someone was noting that it was sitting up there and didn't know who it was, so we went through and scribbled a name on there, which I couldn't read, and then I finally figured out who it was. But you know, we have a process for when a board includes things to be concerned or presented in front of this Board or a planning commission, that they turn these documents in prior to mailing out so that each commissioner or each trustee can read these documents and understand what they are. At no time was that asked to be read in, at no time was it presented as this is mine and it needs to be in the minutes. I'm afraid of setting a precedence that I can come in and send an encyclopedia Britannica up there and I want it included in the minutes. If somebody just reads paper around here, it's supposed to be included in the minutes. We have a process. I would look that we stick to the process. If you want something in the minutes, give it to the commissioner or to the chairperson of the meeting, have them read them into the minutes, have them delve into it. I don't even have a copy of that stuff that was there, how can I approve to have it submitted into, into the minutes itself? That's what I have to say.
Any other comments, Board members? Is there a motion? Okay, we'll move on to item 10A, agreement regarding liquor license, Birdie's Indoor Golf. Board members, as you know, we have a liquor license request for Birdie's Indoor Golf over at 974 to 980 North Lapeer. Any comments, questions for the applicant? Trustee Nichols?
Yes, I have a question about parking. Do you have the adequate parking over there?
We believe we do.
Okay.
Looking at the previous tenants, I think we count, I was attempting to try and find what their maximum occupancy was in a restaurant that was there, the Oxford Kitchen. The sign's not in there anymore, but counting the seats, it holds about 88 people, and our maximum is going to be about 35 to 40 people. In addition to that, I have spoken to, and I included it in the packet that I gave you, I included the information that I spoke to Matt from Corporate Meyer. In the event that there is an issue, I can apply through them. There's a cost involved in that, so I have not done that yet until we find out if it's going to be an issue. More than likely, it'll probably be based on what our maximum occupancy is, which we don't know.
I would like to compliment you.
Mr. Morrissey, if you guys please identify yourselves for the minutes. That's my fault, I apologize.
My apologies. I'm Megan Heslop.
Tom Morrissey.
This agenda item is just to approve the agreement, not to go through the application, but so what we're looking at is the agreement that they will not take the liquor license out of Oxford Township, so that's what we need to be looking at. The next item is the application, while we get into the details.
Okay, for me, sounds good.
Thank you, clerk Wright. Board members, any questions on the agreement?
I want to ask both Megan and Mr. Morrissey, have they read this agreement in full? Have their lawyers looked at it? Have they, they understand what it states?
Yes, sir.
We have read it. Our attorney has not reviewed it, but when we first met with him, he informed us that we were...
That we could have that coming.
That it was coming. So, we were already aware of it.
What it states is you're not going to take this, you understand that, out of Oxford Township if this business were to close.
Correct.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure you have a full understanding that if things happen, you're allowed to keep it here, it's not allowed to go anywhere else.
Correct.
I move to approve the agreement regarding liquor license between requests from Birdie's Indoor Golf and Bar LLC and the Charter Township of Oxford as presented.
Second.
Motion by trustee Payne, supported by trustee Curtis, to approve the agreement as presented.
Yeah, the agreement was drafted with 960 through 980 in the document, so that'll have to be amended in in the agreement, so as long as we get the right addresses in there.
Okay.
That'll work, so.
Is that something you'd like for us to submit?
If you're confident that 974 through 980 are the addresses...
We have a fully executed lease now, so...
Then that works, we just need to amend our motion here that this document is in crack and iron.
Okay, trustee Curtis, do you please amend your motion to make, prove the document as amended?
I will...
That was Margie's motion.
I will amend my motion to 974 through 980.
Correct.
North Lapeer.
I will amend my second.
Okay, Board members, do we need to vote on this amendment?
You have to vote on the amendment and then vote on the original motion.
Okay. Board members, we need to vote on the amendment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Now, Board members, we need to approve the motion to approve the agreement between Birdie's Indoor Golf LLC and the Charter Township of Oxford as amended. That's the motion we're going to need.
So, the motion that you're looking for is...
The original motion, but as amended. Did you approve the amendment? I have to approve the motion.
Do you have to read the whole resolution?
No.
I move to approve the agreement regarding liquor license between requests from Birdie's Indoor Golf and Bar LLC and the Charter Township of Oxford as presented.
As amended.
As amended.
There's already a motion on the floor. The first motion stands.
That still stands?
Margie made in Jack.
So, that still stands?
It still stands.
Okay. Let's call for that original motion vote.
You're going to roll call it?
Yep.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Dar?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
That motion carries. Board members, now we're onto the liquor license application for Birdie's Indoor Golf and Bar. Trustee Nichols, I know you had some questions on the parking.
Yes, I'm kind of concerned about parking because I'm somewhat familiar with that area, and when there's a restaurant, there's difficult to find parking space. You're going to do renovation to this building, correct?
Correct.
Okay, you'd be presenting a site plan to the planning commission?
Yes, we will.
Very good. I think all the answers will be given at that time, I think, through the planning commission.
So, this will have to come back in front of the planning commission?
Jack's hesitant.
The requirement for any items of that nature would have to be directed by the Township Board. If the Township Board feels the need to go to the planning commission, the police, the fire chief, or any other entities, the planner, the attorney, that's where the Board has to make that motion here. The Board's satisfied that the documents rest on their own morals and they're okay, then they can make that motion and move forward accordingly.
Well, I think that since they're doing some renovation, I think it'd be a good idea that the planning commission get involved in this, even from a security standpoint, that kind of thing.
I kind of agree with Al just personally, I'd like to see it maybe held back and the planning commission gets us their review, once again, it's their blessing, we have more, we're lucky to go ahead.
Did the applicant discuss this with Matt Loninstader of the Building Department about moving into the, I'm supposed to be asking the supervisor this question, but you can answer the question.
Pete, is that, are you referring to this on me for a minute?
Yes.
Yes, that's that, correct.
See, I believe we got an applicant that's busily searching out their liquor license and the site plan, because this is and was a restaurant with occupancy of close to 100. I think in here, but I don't know for sure, I can't get somebody to say yes, they're not here today, did we in fact have a restaurant that had a capacity of over 80 people in one building?
Your fire chief knows.
Fire chief knows. And we had capacity in the second building of how many people, I don't know. It takes 125 to be sprinkled, suppressed?
100.
100.
Pete, as a fire chief, would you like to review this, this plan? I mean, as one of our consulting professionals?
I talked to the deputy supervisor a little bit about it the other day, and I believe she said that it had gone through Matt's review through the planner. It does fall under the zoning, because that is what's zoned up there, CE2 or whatever, everything falls into the zoning. Site plan wise, there's nothing changing on the building or anything, so that part of it, it's not like it's expanding, it's not doing anything to the outside of the building, it's not adding anything. It's no different than any kind of, somebody could just come in and say, I want to open up XYZ haircut shop or whatever in there, and again, it's usually done by administrative review by the planner, that way because it's not changing, zoning, anything like that. Obviously, for building plans on the inside, actual drawings need to be submitted for when they have to build out inside it because they're going to be tearing the kitchen out, renovating, changing all that around, so they have to prevent, you know, the regular building permits and drawings through the building department to review, but that's outside of the, of the site plan, the planning commission.
See, to go in front of the planning commission, usually it's A, a special land use, or B, we're taking a new building and putting it in, making sure everything's there. I think what Matt told me, I'm not thinking, Matt told me that this building was currently a restaurant. Every building code will have to be met for this proposed establishment, and it's going to have lesser people in it. The feeling was it didn't have to go to the planning commission because everything fit, and it was less use, less number of people proposed in the building. This is not a bar, I believe. I believe this is a virtual golf game, and there's only 10 stools to sit at a bar, as shown on here. So, I'm looking at it more as a gaming area where somebody goes and plays and eats hot dogs and drinks a couple beers and then goes home. So, I'm with Matt Loninstader that states it's not a new use, it's an approved use, and it's approved at a higher density for the restaurant than the building next door, which was the workout center, I believe, right?
Uh, no, it was actually a tanning salon.
Tanning salon, yeah.
I believe it's last people.
So, with their occupancy suggested at around 40, this fit without having to drag it through all that process, we were protected. Pete will have his review, the building officials will have their review at time of build-out, so that's why it didn't go to the planning commission.
I guess I'm satisfied with that explanation, and I think, you know, having full permits and having inspection in terms of the kitchen and so forth satisfies me.
Okay, Board members, do you, what's your feelings on this matter?
I move to approve the resolution for Birdie's Indoor Golf and Bar LLC liquor license that indicates, whereas, Birdie's Indoor Golf and Bar LLC, a Michigan limited liability company applicant, has been made application to the Charter Township of Oxford Township for a Township new Class C liquor license, license, and whereas, this Board makes the finding that each requirement as set forth in the Township Liquor License Ordinance, including those requirements set forth in Code Sections 6-34A, Subsections 1 through 18, have been met and complied with by the applicant, and whereas, the applicant has agreed to execute and has provided to the Township the executed agreement required by the Township's resolution entitled Resolution Establishing Administrative Rule Regarding the Issuance of New Quota Class C Liquor Licenses Adopted on May 10, 2017, upon and as condition of the issuance of the license. Now therefore be it resolved that the Township approves the issuance of the applicant of a Township new Class C liquor license, subject to compliance with the following conditions precedent. A, complying with the requirements of the Township Resolution entitled Resolution Establishing Administrative Rule Regarding the Issuance of New Quota Class C Liquor Licenses Adopted May 10, 2017, and B, complying with the terms and conditions of the agreement entitled Agreement Regarding Liquor License Agreement, which has been executed by the applicant and the Township. And part of this resolution of approval, the terms and conditions of which applicant has agreed to comply with and to follow, which agreement attached as Exhibit A is hereby incorporated into and made part of the resolution. It further resolved that the Township clerk is hereby authorized and directed to complete the blank spaces in the form entitled Local Government Approval, attached hereto as Exhibit B, to execute the form where indicated and to mail the completed form to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
Motion by trustee Payne, supported by trustee Nichols, to approve the agreement as read. That'd be perfect. Clerk Wright, please call the roll, please.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dar?
Yes.
And trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. You can contact clerk Wright tomorrow, we can start the process. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Smile, thank you very much.
Okay, Board members, the next on the agenda is a possible contribution from Menard versus City of Escanaba MTT appeal. As you know, it's basically for how they assess big box stores, and communities across the state have been contributing in small amounts, most obviously has been a couple thousand, to basically justify how the MTTs come up with these numbers, and basically to back the MTA in their request for support.
You know, reading through all the legal things, it's okay for us to help and contribute. How much is up to this Board to approve? Knowing what we know about our only big box here, it's pretty strong that they have the funds and the ability to fight small communities. I, I want to help them, and I don't know what is a fair and amicable amount of money to present to them, and I would look for somebody's guidance in that. Normally, it would be Bill, who has close mid on the purse strings. If somebody else wants to come up with a number, I'd look at that.
The other, the email that was sent to myself from Supervisor Dunn indicated a number in the amount of $2,000 that Kermers Township would be donating, and Orion Township is considering the same amount. So, that's what the two other municipalities are looking at, contributing.
My question is, where would these funds be coming from? Operating expense?
From our legal fees and general fund.
Okay.
I figure if they contributed too, and they're bigger than us, I would think they're more along the $1,600 range, just by if you do comparables. And that's what I was, and that's why I came up with $1,600.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Pardon?
That sounds reasonable, you said 16?
1,600.
Yeah.
Because they're bigger than us, and I figure, as they should pay more.
I move to approve the resolution to support the legal defense in the case of Menard Incorporated versus the City of Escanaba as presented with a contribution in the amount of 1,600. Contributed funds to be expensed to the general fund account 101-210-826-000, legal fees.
Second.
Motion by trustee Payne, supported by trustee Curtis, to contribute $1,600 to the legal fund for the Escanaba litigation. Roll call, vote, please.
Trustee Dar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And trustee Payne?
Yes.
Thank you, Board members. Item 10D, Oxford Village Summer Tax Collection Posting Agreement. We've done this for the Village of Oxford since 2011. They like to do it again for this year until they get their treasure position straightened away. They've approved it at the council level, and it's up to the Township Board as to whether they'd like us to continue approving it at our level.
I'll make a motion to authorize Treasurer Joseph G. Ferrari to execute the agreement for Oxford Village Tax BSNA postings as presented and attach the formal agreement to the minutes.
Board. A motion by Curtis, supported by Nichols, to approve the agreement as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Board members, the next item is SEMCOG Planning Assistance Grant. I presented a memo to you. Basically, we could get up to $50,000 if approved, we would need the 20% match, and it'll be a thorough study of putting a safety path sidewalk from Indian Lake Road all the way to Harriet Street through Oxford Township, when hopefully, when the state of Michigan's doing their road improvements. I think it's a win-win for everybody, and hopefully by going through the process and everything, maybe we could get a contractor that the state's in favor of as well, and give us more, basically, studies to show them how this should be something that they should consider.
This includes the Village of Oxford as well in the study?
Yes, yeah, they're part of it as well, they're one stakeholder's.
And we'll fund the whole, 100%?
Of the match, we'll fund the 100% of the match.
So, there'd be no money's out of the villages?
Their argument, when I went there, is that they're already township tax makers, so.
The $10,000 that we would have to pay to match the 50?
Correct.
What, is the, does the safety path fund have that money? And it's not going to take from maintenance, or what's already, what's ever been budgeted out already?
We've not had any other projects, we've just had some easement acquisitions, but that's about it.
Okay.
Trustee Curtis?
I see somebody had some earth-moving power behind you, Joe, because they, you need to start getting some grants, and this is pretty good. It's taken everything, even 50 grand is a lot of money to get 40 for 10.
We may not even get 50, we may get 20.
Exactly, right, right.
At least, my hope is that we get it, we get a study, that I can tell the state, here you go, guys, this isn't just some local elected officials telling you what we want, here's a study saying this is what we need.
And it was good that the village could make that application since we were ineligible, so you had to do that legwork.
I've already got that all set up, ready to go, pending on Township Board approval.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Charter Township of Oxford's traffic safety grant application for an up to $50,000 grant through the SEMCOG Planning Assistance Program for a walking biking audit along M24 from Indian Lake Road to Harriet Street. It is understood that if our grant application is successful, that a 20% match will be required from Oxford Township Safety Path Fund. Supervisor William Dunn is authorized to sign the grant application paperwork and the Transportation Alternatives Program sponsorship agreement on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford.
Second.
Motion by trustee Curtis, supported by trustee Payne, to approve the application as presented. All those in favor, please, oh, money expenditure, clerk Wright, please call the roll.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Dar?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
And Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes. Thank you, Board members. Item 11A, item is removed from the consent agenda, we have not. Item 12, public comment? See, item 13, more trustee comments. Trustee Curtis, please.
I just want to get started with this right away. I know it's two years off, but there's a lot of work to be done. It's the census. The census is coming in two years from now, about a year and seven months, maybe. There is a lot of preparation, I know clerk Wright, in order to get an actual, as actual a count as possible. I don't know who's in charge of this, I don't know what we have to do, but I think this Township should be ahead of itself with the number of housing starts we've had, the number township should be ahead of itself with the number of housing starts we've had, the number of SEV evaluations have almost doubled in the past 10 years. While our industry has gone down, we're becoming a bedroom community where we should have an actual real good count from our census, because it has major impacts on liquor licenses. Ascertaining liquor licenses, every new 1,500 people from the previous census allows you a new liquor license. So if our estimates are right, we're looking for almost two new liquor licenses, possibly a third, but we need to get out in front of this census so that we get a true actual figure and number into, into our government's hands.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Payne?
Nothing.
Clerk Wright?
Yeah, a few things there. For those who aren't aware, Cresta County Church has changed their name to Lake Point Church, and from an election standpoint, we contacted the county and the state to determine whether or not we need to send out new voter registration cards. They said we did now, but we needed to make it publicly known that the name of the location has changed, but the location has not changed. So that's precincts four and five, so that's something that we need to be aware of. Another item is, I have a FOIA request in, it was sent to me, and I did send an email out requesting if you received any information before or at the March 22 meeting. Several have responded, but I'm requesting if you can respond to me by email, whether or not you have received anything or not, I would appreciate that. On 2nd of June is going to be dedication for the Pauline Trail Bridge in honor of Larry Oprett, so that's happening at 10:00 AM on Saturday, June 2nd, same day as Tough Mudder. Also, the Oxford Avenue Assistance Awards are happening tomorrow at 6:00. And just to add to the census from trustee Curtis, each body right now equates to about $85 a year in Oxford Township revenues from constitutional revenue sharing, so that's important, the more, the more bodies we have in Oxford Township, their account will increase our revenues, and our general fund revenues is about, let's see, about 55% of our general fund revenues are from the constitutional revenue sharing, so it is important. We are partnering with Oakland County through what's called a LUCO program, so they're, I think it's through their assessing department, that they're partnering with us to try to get the count really more tight than we can, so with that, that's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Trustee Dar?
Okay.
Trustee Nichols?
I just want to comment that, for those of you that didn't catch the meeting for the village council when Joe Ferrari gave a presentation concerning the tax situation, and also the safety path, he did an excellent job on it, and just want to compliment him for it.
I don't have anything. Board members, will the motion adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Motion by trustee Curtis, supported by trustee Payne, to adjourn the meeting at 7:35 PM. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Thanks, board members.